Hey, Remar nurses. It is the end of a very long day, but doesn't matter. We still have to study. It's still so important that every day we're making progress to get our nursing license. So I have my baby here. Say hi, Michael.
Hi.
And you guys are moms. You know what it's like when you have kids. You have to study some time with them. So today I have a great presentation for you. We are actually going to be diving into this book right here, The Virtual Trainer. So if you have it, we are going to be covering pages 21. So I have a presentation that I've been working on and I want to show you. If you guys are familiar with, if you're familiar with this book, then you know that page 21 talks about our pediatrics. So we're going to go over just the beginning portion of it so that we can, you know, just dig more into the content because the book is, the book is where the content is about, alright? And with the changes on the exam, yeah, you want to show them the book? With the changes on the exam, we have to be prepared to demonstrate that we are competent. Okay? So without further ado, we are going to get into it, alright? Alright, so okay, I'm going to send you with daddy, alright? Can you say bye bye?
Bye.
Alright, have fun. Alright, and you and me, guys, we have, we spent this week going over a lot of the Remar products and that's why I'm so happy for everybody that's in The Virtual Trainer. Quick facts and this, okay? So let's get into my presentation for you guys. Mom number one, NCLEX instructor, we are just doing it. We are doing it today. Alright, so try to follow along with me. If you have it, we are studying the integrate, uh, the important concepts of pediatrics on page 21, okay? On page 21, don't let me forget to tell you guys that there are 5,600 nurses in The Virtual Trainer right now and I am so, so, so happy about that. I am so, so happy about that. And as I wait for more people to get on here, I'm going to just, let me do some things here, like number one, shut off my alerts because I get a ton of alerts about every little thing. So I'm going to shut them off before I do the presentation. But everybody who has been joining, everyone who's been joining The Virtual Trainer, I so, so hope that you guys are finding the accountability that I intended you to have with the VT because one of the things I think that is so necessary if you are planning on testing in the next month or so is that you are consistent with your studying. So right now, if you guys are just joining us, it's about 400 of us, we're going to do a presentation on page 21 of The Virtual Trainer Notebook and it, it will just allow us to make sure that we are capitalizing on the important points of this program, alright? Again, remar nurse dot com. If you don't have The Virtual Trainer, we are still doing the sale on The Virtual Trainer where we slash the price down to 149 and that includes free shipping. Hey, if you have the quick facts, the five star quick facts, and let me just grab it because I actually have it today. If you have this book, guys, if you have this book, alright? Then it is just 129. Cindy says, "I passed, but I'm still printing things out of The Virtual Trainer." Alright, exactly. I love it. I love the VT, alright? So the sale is still happening. Now, open up your VT student workbook if you have it, alright? Open up your VT student workbook if you have it and look at page 21. Now, in The Virtual Trainer Workbook, this is where we do go over the developmental milestones and just bear with me. I want to make sure that we are on the same page. So if you have the VT workbook, this is what it would look like, okay? So you can just feel free to add these notes right to the first box, okay? Right to the first box of this workbook, alright? So anyhow, important points for us to remember about the growth and development of the zero to six month old. And I'm going to come back, all while we are quarantined, we will be doing these reviews, just making sure that you guys have additional support on this information. Remember, safety, zero to six months, safety is the hallmark of your priority as a nurse, okay? Safety is the hallmark. And the major developmental milestones. There are a list of them that I give you during the VT lecture, but make sure that you understand that steady head movement by four months is essential. It's a really big marker. It really is a big marker for that infant. And also, another major marker is that birth weight doubles by six months. And so a lot of the times, you know, you hesitate as a nurse, a lot of the times you hesitate as a nurse to, you know, to infer whether a baby is growing on time or not growing on time. But these two are solid. These two are solid indicators of if a baby is where they should be. And you guys can see four months and six months, the baby's been alive for, you know, for some time. So these aren't newborn indicators. Usually when parents are worried when their baby is first born, you, you do tell them, you know, hey, everybody grows at different rates. We will see. We will continue to monitor the child. But by four months, if they are not doing these things, if they're not doing this thing in particular, I should say, then that indicates an issue, alright? And also, if the birth weight does not double by then, then you have some growth and you have some development issues here, okay? So the teaching, the teaching, let me do this. The teaching should be directed towards the family, okay? And you can still talk and soothe and interact with the infant, but the teaching at this age is directed towards the family. Now, when you get to the toddler age, two and three years old, remember, guys, when, when you are teaching a toddler or a three year old or four year old, you are expected to do teaching to that client. So yes, if you're doing a procedure to a four year old or a three year old, you can tell the family, but you absolutely must tell that child. And so don't forget that point. Like there is a transition phase where you don't educate babies, but toddlers you do. And so don't fail to include that in your plan of care for pediatric nursing, okay? So this book that I'm, I'm going over, The Virtual Trainer Workbook and I am on page 21. I'm doing a review. So if you, if you haven't got the VT workbook yet or you're still waiting on it, just listen along. This will be helpful for you anyways. If you have finished the lecture, then I really want you to kind of apply what you have learned to these questions that I have prepared for you. So here's the first question. I believe this is a question here. Okay, so here's a question, guys. A nurse is caring for an infant diagnosed with delayed development. Which of the following medications would be most important for proper growth and development? Okay, is it number one, infamous formula? Two, levothyroxine? Three, ibuprofen? Or four, vitamin K? Okay, and so here we are talking about what? We are talking about an infant diagnosed with delayed development. So which of the following medications are going to be the most important? Alright, and I'm going to give you a second to kind of think on it. Is it the infamous formula? Alright, just think about it. Just give yourself a moment and really think about pathophysiology, alright? And for those of you who are just joining us, we are doing a quarantine review of page 21. We're disassembling together and we are trying to study this information. Go ahead, put your answers on the screen. What do you think it is? What do you think it is? And this is good for us. I mean, you think about people who, who say we need nurses and, and there's all type of issues with not having enough nurses. What are we doing to get these nurses licensed or not licensed? What's going on? Alright, we really got to rally around all the nursing students right now. Okay, so the correct answer, ooh, I see a lot of people falling right into my distraction. Falling right into my distraction. I put a distractor in here. Okay? Okay, alright, so the correct answer, guys, is going to be, it might shock you, but then if you think about it, it shouldn't, okay? Hey, hey, yes, alright? The thyroid hormone replacement therapy is an important aspect of growth and development. So you really got to know what each medication is used for. Now, yes, number one, big distraction because if you can feed a child as much as you want to, but if they have an underactive thyroid problem, mhm, right? If they have, ooh, if they have cleft palate where you're feeding them and they're not really getting the nutrition, it's just falling out of their mouth, alright? Is that going to be effective? Okay, is that going to be effective? So think about it because this is how, this is how nursing students get mixed up and, you know, and then they think, wow, I really, I really thought I was prepared for NCLEX and I studied very hard and I don't understand why I didn't pass. You fell for the distractors, okay? You fell for the distractors. And so, and so how important is it for us to know the content? Yes, how important is it for us to know the content? Alright, so I'm really proud of you guys. Yes, I'm really proud of you guys for showing up and studying and I like that point. Most of the time, children are already on some sort of nutrition. They're, you know, you don't, you can't keep a baby alive if you're not feeding them. So even if you're breastfeeding them or bottle feeding them, if they are diagnosed with delayed development, delayed growth, then something else needs to be added. Something else is an underlying issue, okay? So here we see, that was a very good question. That was a very good question to test us, alright? Okay, and let me just say this. If you have, if you have the VT and it's not page 21, it's not the developmental milestones, just find it. We're doing pediatric development. We're doing pediatric development. So somebody says, "I saw this when I was writing." Okay, and if you're just now joining me, go back and watch the replay because we did the introduction to all of this. Alright, but we're just hopping right into it. We're just hopping right into it, okay? Alright, so this is the pediatric development section. Zero to six months. Let's do another question here. Let's see if I can get to it. Okay, here we go. A nurse is caring for a newborn who has small whitish pinpoint spots over the nose. The finding should be charted as? Newborn whiteheads. Erythema toxicaum or milia. Alright, this is assessing whether you know what is normal for the newborn, okay? Alright, and so we're talking about growth and development here. This is the beauty of The Virtual Trainers that I actually can go and assemble and mobilize you guys all into one place with new information or review information. You guys can all get it, alright? So I see the answers rolling in. I see it, I see it. Everybody got this one. The first question was tough, but everybody's getting this one. Hmm, okay, so you guys are studying. That's good to know. The correct answer, as you all have guessed, is yes. Alright, emilia, these are tiny, white, pearly white firm raised bumps on the face which do disappear on their own. This is normal and the lenugo, these are fine hairs. Erythema toxicaum is a purple rash. If you weren't familiar with these terms, get familiar. Get familiar with them. Alright, let's do another question. Let's see, do I have another question here? Let's do it. This is a power study session right here. Power study session. Oh, that's what it looks like. Okay, that's what newborn milia looks like, okay? For those of you who have, haven't seen it, it's pretty common. All babies have it, okay? Next question here. Ooh, this is a good one. Alright, a nurse is caring for a newborn, a nurse is caring for a newborn. Which of the following is the appropriate order of assessment? Which of the following is the appropriate order of assessment? Is it number one, hearing, respirations, pulse? Two, temperature, respirations, pulse? Three, pulse, respirations, temperature? Or four, respirations, pulse, temperature? We are looking here for the appropriate order of assessment. What say of you guys when you are trying to evaluate the newborn? And kind of think about it, you know, if you have an answer in your head, think about why you are picking that specific answer, okay? So it's been, it's been a long, it's been a long day, but we still got to make time to study. We still got to get it in and every time we are consistent, okay? Every time we are consistent, then this provides us with some progress, alright? Okay, and yes, I'm sorry. So this is page 21 in my workbook, but I forgot there's different, there's different prints of the VT workbook. So if you have maybe the PN or if you have a later version of the RN where we did some updates, this is actually the page. So I took it from 21 because that's what it is in my book, but your book might be different, 16 or whatever. But this is the pediatric developmental milestones, okay? That's what we're going over, okay? So that's where we are. Okay, so I see the answers coming in and I'm going to reveal the right one to you guys. Bear with me, I'm working with the camera and my computer. Okay, here we go. It is, it is. Remember, when you are doing assessments for the newborn, it is important to do the least invasive to the most invasive, okay? The least invasive to the most invasive. And if you take that temperature first, if you take that temperature first, then it will be very difficult to do respirations and things like that, especially if that baby was sleeping, alright? Especially if that baby was sleeping before you woke them up, okay? Alright, so when we talk about the newborn assessment findings, what are our normals? What will our normals be, alright? Think about it. In your minds right now, newborn assessment, what is the normal body color, okay? What is normal for respirations? And you guys, I already, if you had the VT, I lectured on this information. So honestly, you should have these questions. I'm going to reveal the answers, but you should have these questions already in your mind handled. And really, nothing I should be telling you is new. It should really just be a review of what you already know. So when we talk about body color, respirations, what does respiratory distress look like? What does, you know, what should you say? What should you see? What should you hear? What should you not hear? We know that pink, right? A pink color, yes, everybody's putting that down. Exactly, pink is the expected color of a normal newborn. You want a nice pink color. If the baby is pale blue, if it's classified as ruddy, what does ruddy mean? Does anybody know? That is not a good sign. It's not a good sign, alright? In terms of respirations, what do we know? If the infant is breathing, perfect, we are happy. They are breathing on their own. You should actually see the chest rising and falling in the newborn. You should see it. It should be visible. So what are signs of respiratory distress? Things you don't want to see? Well, they are this. Okay, oh, let me go back to respirations real quickly. And again, I see you guys putting it on here, but we do count for a full minute for those respirations, 30 to 60 breaths per minute. Yeah, 30 to 60 breaths per minute. So signs of respiratory distress that we don't want to see, nasal flaring, any kind of grunting, chest retractions. Also, if NCLEX says the infant is singing, that's a bad sign. I mean, you don't want to hear, huh, huh, alright? That's singing, like where you have a musical sound to the breathing. We don't want that in the infant. That's a bad sign. It means they're really struggling, okay? So these are indicators, assessment deviations for notifying somebody that that baby's not doing well, okay? So singing, you may not have encountered that before, so keep that in your mind, okay? Keep that in your mind. Alright, quick study session here. Last one I want to talk about is the heart rate. We go into detail about the heart conditions in pediatrics, the infant heart defects and such and such and, you know, the APGAR scoring, these things are very important. So just major takeaway points here is think about the heart rate. What do we expect it to be in terms of a number that is normal? What is the best method to evaluate the pulse in the newborn? What do you guys know about that? What do you think it is? Before I reveal the answer, if you had to get a pulse in a newborn, where are you going to go to get it? And also, in your documentation, do you expect that pulse to be regular? Or is it okay if the pulse in a newborn is irregular? What do you guys say? I'm just going to give you a minute to just meditate on that. Think about it, okay? Yes, you can use your iPad or cellphone for The Virtual Trainer. Yes, you can, okay? Alright, so, okay, dorsus pedis apical pulse. I see some different answers. Alright, the best way to evaluate the pulse in the newborn, alright? So the best method, okay? Here we go, alright? So the best method, we expect the heart rate to be 120 to 160 for sure, alright? Now even, now if they're, to be honest, if a baby is sleeping, is it an expected finding for that heart rate to go down? Yeah, sometimes a sleeping baby, the heart rate can go down, okay? And the best method to evaluate that pulse, alright, is apical, okay? Don't be trying to get a brachial pulse or a poplido or femoral pulse on the newborn. It's going to be very difficult. They are not going to stay still and definitely you'll want to have a stethoscope. It's just so much easier, alright? So get that stethoscope out. Get that stethoscope out. Also, you expect that pulse? Hey, it can be irregular. Yes, 180 when crying. The, the pulse can go up to 180 if the baby is upset. Absolutely, absolutely. So the newborn heart rate is irregular, okay? The newborn heart rate is definitely irregular. It's definitely irregular, alright? And that is an expected finding. That 100% is an expected finding, okay? So, hey, this is it. This is it, alright? Good stuff. Always great to spend some time reviewing, alright? Remarnurse.com, everything you need to pass NCLEX. I want to come on here and represent for you guys because I want to let you know that no matter what, we can still find time to study. We can still get in these study sessions and make this a priority. We need nurses so bad in Ohio. I don't, I mean, I know it's everywhere, but in our hospitals, we need nurses, okay? And I want to try to do whatever I can to support you guys. So let me know what you need. You want more reviews? We can do more reviews. We can do things from The Virtual Trainer. A lot of you guys are new to it, so you're not exactly sure like how to use it or how awesome it is. And I'm still getting questions, sorry, I want to plug my phone in so it doesn't die. I'm still getting questions about what's the difference between The Virtual Trainer and between the DVD program? So all these things, I, I, I love you guys. I love that the Remar nurses are taking time to help understand, help everybody understand exactly how Remar Review works and how Remar Review is different. There's just some things I want to show you, some, some things to The Virtual Trainer that you guys may have noticed or may have not noticed about it. So ask me now, okay? Ask me now about the VT if you have any questions. The Virtual Trainer sale is on, 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 on until April the 4th is supposed to be the last day and we are solely basing that on our ability to be able to get to our office and ship out books to you guys. So everybody who ordered, the books are more than likely going out every day, alright? If not, two days. So just be patient with us. When you guys get your shipping notification, then the books have shipped out, okay? Alright, and I see reviews, yes. So we're going to, I'm going to try to make sure that that all happens, okay? So Virtual Trainer, people who ask me, "What's the difference between the DVD and Virtual Trainer?" I just want you to watch this next couple of seconds and think about your DVD program and then compare it to what I'm about to show you, alright? Shout out to everyone watching this that's still in school but out of school right now and uses this to keep up. Yes, exactly. So, yes, exactly. So, and then again, remember, we put this, we put this on, on the study group page that our office right now is closed except for shipping. So if you guys are trying to call the office, there's nobody there. There's nobody there, okay? And that is just a fact. So we're doing customer service through email support. So email us at support@remarreview, okay? Support, support@remarreview. Okay, so really quickly, here's The Virtual Trainer, guys. This is the online review interface. Yes, you can get it internationally. We ship it to Jamaica, Dubai, the Philippines, everything, okay? So what I wanted to show you guys about The Virtual Trainer and again, if you guys are asking me how long it takes to get to different countries and things like that, email the customer service team because they'll be able to tell you exactly country, I don't know, the country tracking, it's usually three to five days, alright? So what I wanted to show you guys, some things that we did with The Virtual Trainer right now. Yes, you guys know that The Virtual Trainer gives you your activity. It tells you how many times you sign on in your training, how many quizzes you passed, how many you failed, all that good stuff, alright? All that good stuff. But also, we added Remar VT stars. So this is now our leadership board in The Virtual Trainer and this is super cool because if you're RN or a PN, you are now able to have even more accountability and you're able to see, okay, like you earn points actually for studying and how, how consistent you are and things that you do, like courses that you complete. If you did all of the before the books arrive, you know, section and things like that, you get to get more points accountability and we'll be rewarding our gold star users and things and those who have the highest points. We just literally started this last night, so it is crazy to see. Shout out to our number one, alright? VT star right now, W Coco, has 19 points already. So gold star, that is amazing for you. So that is The Virtual Trainer. I mean, in terms of getting all of your, your information in one place, this is the newest, this is the best way to do it, alright? The file vault, some people were asking me, where can they get their new quick facts for pediatrics for nursing? It's in your file vault where I just clicked that and literally the book is, am I in the right location? Okay, the book is here in this file vault, but the issue is that this is my account and I'm not in the Remar location right now. So I have to change locations. Give me one second. Alright, because the thing about my Virtual Trainer is that I have Virtual Trainers for different companies and I have Virtual Trainers for different schools. So literally, if you are in a nursing program, your nursing program can have its own Virtual Trainer and I will create it for your school. And so you will only have, you will only have your students, you will only have your classmates and your own Virtual Trainer. So I need to get to the general Virtual Trainer. But again, this is one of the benefits of me having the Um, but, again, this is one of the benefits of me having the virtual trainer, that is totally customizable and really cool in terms of what we're able to provide as an NCLEX review company. So, I am super happy about it. But I was gonna show you guys where you can get your um, where you can get your virtual trainer at. Um, if you want to renew the virtual trainer, it is sixty-nine dollars. It's sixty-nine dollars. Locations. And somebody says, is the difference from the books that you have uh before the sale? No. So, with the virtual trainer, guys, remember, you are gonna get two books. You're gonna get the Remar Virtual Trainer, and a lot of you guys have been watching this for so long that, I don't know, you guys almost know this stuff by memory, but you get two books, okay? The Virtual Trainer Workbook, and you get, thank, and thank you so much for helping me to answer these questions, everybody that's on. And you get the Quick Facts. And plus, so these two books come with all of the online content that you just see here, alright? Um, and so, it's okay, if you, if you were charged a different price, all you have to do is email us at support at remarreview.com, and we will honor the sixty-nine dollar price. That's, that's not a problem for us. We will do it. Uh, everybody knows, all of the team knows, that we're saying it's sixty-nine dollars, okay? Perfect. Okay, so, if you go to um NCLEX Resources, alright, let me show you guys. So again, if you're at the file vault and you go to NCLEX Resources, you will see the Quick Facts for Pediatrics VT Book. Okay, the Quick Facts for Pediatrics VT Book. Okay, so, that is the way that you're going to get your book. Okay, and you can just, you can just download it from there. And about the renewal price, if you are seeing a different price, it's because when you signed up, that was the actual renewal price. So if you're seeing a hundred and five dollars for thirty days, that is because that was the price of it when you signed up. Um, but, in an effort to try to make everything easier for you guys, Remar, we lowered the price of it, so we, we lowered the price from one oh five to sixty-nine dollars. So, all you have to do is contact the team to get that price, but the one oh five is what you ha- actually signed up for. So that's what you're gonna see inside your virtual trainer, okay? Um, somebody asked, where do you see the clinical judgment activities? Okay, that's a great question. So, on your calendar, and you can also get your calendar, let me show you, from the file vault. So if you're RN, this is also where you get your six-week calendar from. You will see clinical judgment activities, and this is one of the benefits of the virtual trainer, is that um in comparison with the DVD program, um, I did a daily calendar for you guys, okay? I, I did a daily calendar, and that daily calendar is literally to the minute. So this is an example of what a study day should look like for you. This is how long the uh, the information should take and those things, alright? So, um, she says, complete clinic, she says, where are the clinical judgment activities? Because you might see these. So, again, you can find the clinical judgment activities in your virtual trainer workbook, okay? The clinical judgment, so this is an example of one. And it kind of looks like something that you would find in the before the books arrive section. And so the answers for all of the clinical judgment activities will be down here. And this is just an example of one clinical judgment activity, uh, but you have several of these throughout, in, in addition to your homework, alright? Um, you have several of these throughout your workbook, okay? You have several of these. So, exam- example here, so, this is it, okay? So, the virtual trainer is a combination of uh online resource plus the books that is super beneficial to help you keep your studying going, alright? Alright, so, power study session, just to make sure that we have understood major principles about zero to six months. If you're just joining us, please go back and watch the video. It's not that long, and you can listen to it. And uh, just add it to your notes at your leisure, whether you're studying with your kids or you're studying by yourself. You can still listen to it and make some progress for today, for today. Only what we do today matters, alright? So, will I get uh the resources I need using the virtual trainer? Yes, you will. You'll get the resources that you need using the virtual trainer. You have everything in one place. It is super amazing. It's super amazing for you to be able to study with. Um, and what I love about it is that it's kind of self-explanatory in terms of um, the virtual training section. This is an example. Um, you have a getting started section, alright? Um, and it'll tell you how to use the program before the books arrive, and then your actual NCLEX virtual trainer RN. Um, and so you just, you, you spend time in here, spend time in here before the books arrive. And then once you get your books, you need to hop right into your RN, because that's most important. Yes, we also have one for LPNs too, and then, I don't know if you guys noticed it, but I have crazily increased the activities in the before the books arrive section. So, you have all of these new activities to do, and I hope you guys get into these case studies that I put in here. They're very, very good. And see how you love them, alright? And again, I didn't do this as a way to increase your studying at all, because remember the before the books arrive section is totally optional. You don't have to do it. But, I did think that if you wanted to stay busy, um, if you wanted to stay busy, then this would be a great opportunity for you to do so. And let me just show you one of the case studies here, okay? You gotta get a ninety-five percent on it. And so, it's very, you know, these case studies are very developed. They're for a specific purpose. And they are to help you. Everything in here is to help you really get a hold of this information. It is not um to hinder you or anything like that, alright? Everything is very intentional that I put in here, so you will see a lot of repetition, because I, there is, there is important points that you just, you need to know, you need to know, okay? So, uh, thank you so much for studying with me today, a power session. Somebody says, when is the next power session? Well, that's the thing about a power session, um, it is unscheduled. You've just got to be ready. What I would suggest you doing is hitting the notification bell on a Remar page, so that you know when I'm going live. Okay, you know when I'm going live, because there's a lot of crazy things going on right now, and so I don't want to commit to a schedule. I already have quite a big schedule for you guys, and so I don't want to add something to my plate. Uh, and I just want to be able to study with you when I can. So, somebody asked, how much is the LPN version of it? It is, okay? It is one forty-nine RN or PN with free shipping right now. You can order at a remarnurse.com. It's one twenty-nine if you already have, if you already have the five-star quick facts, okay? If you already have the five-star quick facts. So, you guys have a great evening. I have um so much planned in store for you guys. I just I can't even tell you, I can't even tell you. But what I can say is that please, keep, keep, keep on being intentional about getting your license, and don't let this opportunity where everything is just like becoming easier for nursing students in terms of them stripping down the test. And let me just say something. I see, uh, I see that they are allowing new graduate nurses to work in some states under a temporary license, is what I'm reading, or uh, under the license of another nurse. And although, although, I do understand, I do understand the reason. I want to caution all of my nurses who are going to take advantage of this opportunity, and I want to say this, okay? Make sure that you do not put any, oh, let me see. Make sure you do not put yourself in jeopardy by doing things that you know you don't know how to do, okay? So, for me, that means I don't want any of my Remar nurses when, because to uh do treatments. Will be allowed to, uh, you will be allowed, you will have a lot of freedom, okay? And with it being busy and with it being crazy, because I can imagine that right now that the floor environment is very chaotic. So, with all of the new nurses coming in, you may be asked to do something without the correct supervision. And a lot of new nurses are afraid to speak up, okay? A lot of new nurses are afraid to speak up, and you want to be super helpful, so you will attempt to do something that you have no business doing. So, in short, I don't want to see you guys given IV medications. I'm just honest, honest to God. I don't care what it is. I don't care if it's Lasix, I don't care if it's Stellotid, I don't care if they've been getting IV medications their entire life, every day, three times a day. If I was a nurse without a license, working with a temporary license, I would not do any IV medications. No. All you have to do, alright, if you get in this situation, you look your preceptor in the eye, you say, you know what? I just don't feel comfortable without my license doing this. I'll do everything else, you do the IV medications, because what I have seen as a travel nurse, is that when things are crazy and things are chaotic, even the most seasoned nurses, even the most seasoned nurses can get in trouble with IV medications. And I'm talking about nurses that have been nurses for twenty years, but if stuff is crazy and you have a million things on your plate and four or five patients calling you, I have been on a unit with a nurse who was a nurse for forever, longer than I was alive, push potassium, right? And everybody knows from day one of nursing school, you don't push potassium, right? I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, you know? But, you have to, um, you, you guys kind of be very, very proactive and very cautious about what you can do, alright? What you're allowed to do and what you can do, and what actually will be helpful. Because the last thing you want is for you to give an IV medication, and it's something simple. It's something simple. You can give ferrozymide, you know, and you can give it the right way, and then the patient starts complaining or saying they have, you know, some hearing problems, or their IV is burning, or anything like that, you know? And if you haven't given any IV medications, then you automatically can say, that has nothing to do with me. I don't have to worry about that, okay? And so, I just want you guys to be mindful, and I'm keeping it extra real with you. There will be some liberties that you will have as a nurse without a permit, well, as a nurse without a license, working with a permit. And so, um, I just want you guys to be safe at the end of the day, okay? So, alright, so that's all I'm saying. Get off my hobby horse. I will keep you guys updated on NCLEX information. Keep each other encouraged, keep each other encouraged for this, alright? And I can't wait to see you in the virtual trainer. I can't wait to see, you know, who our top Remar star is next, right? I can't wait to see the consistency, because you, you literally get points for being consistent and completing different things in the VT. So, it's super cool to see who is really taking this studying seriously. And so, uh, I love it. And so for today, our gold star top, top, top student is W Coco. Shout out to you, alright, in your studying. Charlotte Johnson uh is a Remar regular, so I'm not surprised to see this name as well. Two for the number two placement, alright? So have a great day, uh, and I will see you guys later. Bye-bye.